Page number five. And Caitlin Merritt, Chief Preservation Services, Bill seventy-eight twenty-two.
Hi, thank you. Um, so this is introducing Bill seventy-eight twenty-two for an addition to the Baltimore County Landmarks List. Article thirty-two, Title seven of the Baltimore County Code establishes a system of historic and architectural preservation for Baltimore County. The law authorizes the creation of a landmarks preservation commission and sets forth the procedure to be followed for the creation of historic districts and for the compilation and maintenance of a historic landmarks list. The historical landmarks list currently includes three hundred and ninety-nine properties. The law authorized placement of historic structures and environmental settings on the list. A structure is defined as any manmade or natural combination of materials to form stable constructions, including but not limited to buildings, bridges, towers, walls, trees, and rock formations. Periodically, after reviewing structures for eligibility and conducting a public hearing, the landmarks preservation commission approves structures for placement on the preliminary landmarks list. Each list is proposed, each list of proposed structures is then sent to the county executive for review before being forwarded to the county council for consideration. The council may approve the list in whole or in part for adoption as additions to the final landmarks list. The landmarks, landmarks preservation commission recommended a new structure and setting for addition to the list. The county executive has, has reviewed the recommended addition and the recommended recommendation was sent to county council. Thereafter, the Department of Planning notified the property owner of the required public hearing, which the council subsequently held on October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Bill seventy-eight twenty-two proposes to amend the final landmarks list by adding the property called Oak Grove and its setting, which is eight tenths of an acre located at eighteen twenty-two Frederick Road in Catonsville. Upon passage by the county council, Bill seventy-eight twenty-two will take effect in fifteen days from the date of its enactment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Park?
Thank you, Jones. I appreciate Caitlin. I appreciate the work from Department of Planning. Yeah, Rob Brennan, everybody does a fantastic job with this, this effort. And just want to thank the county exec's office as well. I'm not aware of any opposition in my district whatsoever, fully support it and just ask for your support. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Jack.
Yes, Caitlin, I, I yesterday visited a property on Old Hartford Road. It's a barn, stone barn built in eighteen twenty. And I'd like to get the process going of how we can see what can be done to help the landowner and, and the owner of this barn, which he states is very, there aren't many like it in Baltimore County. He thinks only maybe one other. So it's ninety-three oh-three Old Hartford Road.
Okay, I think I, I might know which barn you're referring to because there's a
Oh, good.
There's another property, ninety-three oh-one Hartford Road, which is a county landmark, which is the Cub Hill House. And I think what's used to be associated with that property, but no longer is.
I know, I know exactly where you're talking about, councilman.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And I think, you know, I, I really do think it's a valuable structure. And then the, the, the oh-one is, you know, I'd never seen him before. It's really beautiful. It really is. So, thank you very much. So it's ninety-three oh-three Old Hartford Road. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Done. Thank you very much. We'll move on to page six. And Major Douglas Earl.
Evening, sir. How are you?
Good, good.
Uh, the police department is currently in a regional auto theft task force with a number of other local agencies and the state police. And we've been party to that task force for a number of years. The vehicles that we utilize for those operations are currently rented to us by the Acme Auto Leasing Company. We, the contract we have with them expires, expires and we put the, the contract out for competitive bid. There were no bids received through the county solicitors and we checked to make sure that we were in, in compliance with the MDVBE participation and that was not a requirement according to the bidding documents. This would be a, a five-year contract with a, a, two years to begin with, and then it's up for automatic renewal for three additional one-year periods.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman, all right here.
What's the advantage to leasing over purchasing?
The nature of the, the nature of the work that we do with the vehicles lends itself to occasional excessive wear and damage. The Acme Auto Leasing Corporation, unlike other rental companies, understands this, takes it as a, a, a risk that they're willing to take on. If we own the vehicles, they are then subject to damage, which takes them out of service for an extended period of time. If that occurs with this particular company, they immediately replace the vehicle, fix it, send it back to us, and we swap them back out. So the, the amount of time that we would deal with the vehicle that had been damaged and is deadlined would be a significant issue for the nature of the work that is the, the auto theft task force.
Thank you, Major. That was a, a very, that was a really good answer and easy to understand. So it's very thorough. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Again, Major, we certainly appreciate all your hard work and effort of the auto theft task force. After all, said it before, we continue to say it, oftentimes this is the first step in a more serious crime. Step one, deal a car. Step two, do the another heinous thing. So, uh, and I was surprised, and this surprised me when the young man was killed in the service station and the people who did this horrible horrendous act were driving a stolen car. I was surprised that there's three hundred stolen cars. Like, how many, how many stolen cars are stolen in the day?
Uh, I mean, that varies. I can, I can tell you that, and this is a little bit dated. It dates back to October. But year to date, in the county, we've had eleven hundred vehicles stolen and seventy-six vehicles carjacked, which is a, is a, is an armed robbery. So it's a, it's a significant number. We deal with a lot, especially with it getting colder now. Warm-up thefts are the bane of all existence for us. We tend to have vehicles either running or with keys left in them. About forty-five percent of the vehicle thefts involve someone leaving their key fob or leaving the car unlocked with a spare key inside of it.
Wow. Okay, well.
Mr. Chair.
Appreciate you, Major. Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
Uh, just an observation. I attend a lot of PCRC meetings. And at the PCRC meetings, when the captain gives the report on stolen vehicles, typically at any given precinct, there's about fifteen to thirty vehicles, maybe fifteen to twenty-five vehicles that have been stolen that month. And half of them, as the major indicated, are keys left in. I think you said forty-some percent. Forty-five percent. And then the other interesting fact that I hear at PCRC meetings is that sometimes when you get into your house, you leave your fob too close. You know, you put it in the house and you leave it close enough to the vehicle that you can start, that someone can start the vehicle because the fob is close enough, even though it's secured in the house. So I think we could prevent auto theft by being more secure with our key fobs. I think that's correct, Major.
Yeah, yes, that absolutely is. There are a number of the different models that are just absolutely very easy to steal. We're dealing with a class action lawsuit against Kia and Hyundai is this model years from two thousand and eight to about two thousand and eighteen are extremely easy to steal. But the fobs are, they are one of the banes of auto theft investigations is that unwittingly people don't mean to, but they walk away, they lock it, and they don't realize that the, the fob is still inside. Somebody comes up, tries the door and they're, they're off to, to go. So, yep, and the fob's too close, absolutely is an issue too.
Thank you, Major.
Thank you. We'll move on to page nine. Bernard Brooks, thank you, Major.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and council members. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Glass Health Programs, which is a part of their Medmark Treatment Centers in Timonium to provide expanded evidence-based treatment that includes medications for opioid use disorders for individuals incarcerated here at the detention center. The contract commences upon council approval, continues for five years, and will renew automatically for seven additional one-year periods, with the option to extend the initial term or any renewal term an additional hundred and twenty days. The contract does not specify a maximum compensation for the initial five-year term or for the entire twelve-year and for my term, including the renewal and extension periods. Compensation may not exceed the amount appropriate for these services during the entire contract term. Right now, it's estimated compensation, compensation totals of ten million, seven hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars for the initial five-year term. And we look at the totals timeframe of the entire twelve years. It's estimated at thirty million, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars, nine hundred and seven, nine, including the renewal and extension periods. And as the council members probably remember, this is all stemming from House Bill one sixteen that was passed into law for all detention centers to be a part of.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. Are any questions or comments from the members? There are none. I'll move on. Thank you very much, Senator Brooks.
Thank you.
Do everything you can with that opioid abuse. We'll move right along to page thirteen. Ms. Rosalyn Johnson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, council members. The administration is requesting approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Maryland Transportation Authority to convey approximately twenty-five point four acres of county-owned property, which is valued at about three hundred thousand dollars. It's located on the east side of Raphael Road and bordering the north side of I ninety-five in Kingsville to the MDTA. In exchange for the county property, the MDTA will convey approximately thirty-five point six eight acres of property valued at about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's located at one-one-two-one-one Raphael Road and will provide two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of a financial contribution to the county to be utilized for park improvements on the property, which will serve as an addition to Mount Vista Park in the Upper Falls area. The department advised that the conveyance of the properties will allow the MDTA to construct a maintenance facility with direct access to and from I ninety-five. And we are thankful that the county and the, i.e. the department also have created the best deal for the taxpayers in order to be able to convey this land. So we've been working on this for probably about two and a half years now. And we are, this project is exciting to see it come to fruition, and it will benefit the residents of Baltimore County.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. Any questions or comments from the members? Council members? Yes, Councilman Mark?
Thank you. I have waited a long time to, for this item to pop up on our agenda. I actually began working on this transaction about eight years ago. And we didn't get very much traction until the current county executive was elected. And his administration, working with Governor Hogan's administration, have reached this wonderful compromise that will result in the flipping of two pieces of property so that the Maryland Transportation Authority's maintenance yard will go next to the highway and the area where the maintenance yard was going to be will become open space. It is a win-win for everyone, including the Kingsville community. And I wholeheartedly support this proposal. I want to commend you, Director Johnson, and all those involved in the department, including Pat McDougall. I, I want to thank the county executive who personally became involved with this. All those involved in the real estate area, but I also want to commend Ms. Rogers, especially for her leadership, and also the state government. This is a splendid example of both levels of government working together across party lines to get things done. So please support this proposal. And again, thank you to all involved.
You're so welcome, council member.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brennan?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, Chairman. I'm, I just have my hand in the air for no other reason than to have it in the air.
Thank you so much.
I'm happy that Councilman Marks is happy.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? There are none. Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. Appreciate your hard work. Now we move on to page seventeen. Mr. James Benjamin.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council. The administration is requesting approval of a retainer agreement with Sher Edling to provide legal services to the county. Sher Edling will investigate, evaluate, and potentially represent the county with respect to litigation concerning the production and use of fossil fuels, which have created greenhouse gas emissions. Greenhouse gas emissions have caused global warming, resulting in such severe environmental changes, including but not limited to sea level rise, more frequent and intense extreme precipitation and associated flooding, more frequent and intense heat waves and the associated consequences of these changes. A number of jurisdictions in Maryland and across the country are initiating lawsuits against various companies as a result of their production and use of fossil fuels, which have created greenhouse gas emissions. Baltimore County is considering potential legal options as climate change brought on by greenhouse gas emissions has had significant and adverse impact on the environment, including here in the county. This contract would commence upon council approval and would continue throughout or through completion of any litigation unless it was terminated. This agreement has no fiscal impact to the county unless a favorable judgment is rendered on behalf of the county. Sher Edling would only charge a fee if the county successfully resolves its claims. For any recoveries greater than one hundred million, the firm would receive twenty-five percent of the first one hundred million, plus fifteen percent of the amount greater than one hundred million up to one hundred and fifty million, plus seventy-seven point five percent, that's seven point five percent on the amount of recoveries greater than one hundred and fifty million. And these fees are comparable to fees Sher Edling charges to other non-state plaintiffs. I would note that the auditors had a question earlier regarding the value of equitable relief that Sher Edling would receive as part of its fee. It would be included in the value of the recovery for which a contention fee would be paid. Regarding the value of any equitable relief, the county and the firm would use their best efforts to agree on the value of equitable relief obtained. In the absence of such agreement between the parties as to equitable relief, the value of such relief would be determined by consideration of economic models that would be used in any suit filed of the cost of remediation imposed by the court or jury as any named defendant should suit be filed or by other methods agreed upon by the parties. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Me too.
Start with Councilman Randall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Benjamin, I'm going to ask a series of questions, and they're rhetorical. Baltimore County school buses, they run on gas?
Yeah.
Our police vehicles, do they run on gas?
Yes.
The council members who have chosen to accept the county vehicle, do those vehicles run on gas?
I would assume, I, I would assume that some would.
I think that they all do. Does the county executive's vehicle run on gas?
I would assume so.
Do our fire apparatus and EMS units, do they run on gas?
Mostly diesel.
So do our DPW vehicles, do they run on gas?
I would believe so.
Yes, they do. So I can't fathom why we're considering suing oil companies when we are a customer and we need their product to run county government. Do our trash haulers use gas in their trucks? Yes, of course they do. So I don't understand how we enter into a lawsuit against a provider of a product that we have to negotiate our price with them every, I'm not sure when that contract comes up, if it's every year or every, every cycle or whatever. So it's beyond me how we're, we're, we're looking at this. I'm not disparaging your work or your research or your choice in, in, in firm. This seems to me like it's a bit of a, of a money grab. And I, I'm just going to state right now that I'm not going to be able to get on board with this. And if it comes to a vote on Monday, I'm going to be a no vote on it. So just want everybody to know it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm done.
Thank you, Councilman Randall.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we had Councilman Kett.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Benjamin. I was in the legislature when all the court suits against the tobacco companies were finalized. And as I understand it, the reason that the cigarette companies got in trouble was the fact that they had evidence that they withheld that smoking was damaging to an individual's health. So this is information that they did not make public, but they continued on as if that information didn't exist. If, I, I guess you remember, well, maybe you don't, there are twenty-six thousand gallons of gasoline leaked into the, the ground in, in Jacksonville, which is in my district. And the contamination was unbelievable. I would go once a week and talk to the people and, and to see what's going on. They had two hundred and some monitoring wells. Now, I'm not going to go into all of it. But they, meanings Exxon, took their orders from MDE and Exxon did what MDE told them to do. However, the contamination went on for a month undetected. And in that time period, people were taking showers with that water and the body absorbs the most contaminants by taking showers or baths in, in that water that's contaminated. If you drink it, it's not as detrimental to you as actually taking a shower with it. So in that case, would, since Exxon followed all the directions from MDE, yet there's a possibility that some people may show signs of illness or, or in the, in the future. Would, would Exxon be a candidate for a suit? And so would it be based on just, just the fact that people may get ill in the future? So just, if you could answer that for me.
It's really, I guess that's something that would have to be determined as far as who may be a potential defendant for any lawsuit that would ultimately be filed. I don't think I would be able to say to you with any certainty that Exxon or any other, specifically as we sit here right now, could be a candidate. That's something that would have to ultimately be determined and evaluated.
Okay, I, I guess the point I'm trying to make is that if a company, let's say, follow, let's say emissions from a, a gasoline generator, let's say. If the company that owns the generator adhered to all the laws in place at the time that the generator was in operation, or even today it's in operation, if they followed all of the emission standards, would, would we be suing them?
Again, Mr. Councilman, Rich Catch, at this point, I, I don't think that we would be able to discuss potential defendants. It would really depend on if this counter, contract is approved and Sher Edling does, you know, its evaluation, investigation and be able to then look at potential issues relating to this matter. I think at that point, a determination would have to be made, but at this point, it's, it's just too early to say.
In, in general, then, if a company produced contaminants but adhered to the law that was in place all through the operation, I would think they'd be less likely to be sued. Would that be true or you can't answer that?
At this point, I can't answer that.
No, I understand if the company was, you know, had some documentation that said this stuff is going to cause XYZ problems and nobody knows about it, but we're going to hide that document. That's a whole different story, like happened with the tobacco industry. But I guess I just don't understand if a company, if adheres to every standard that is legally in place, how we could sue them if they've adhered to the law all along?
I'm not saying that they would be sued or would not be sued. What I'm saying is that at this point, this is something where there are, there have been issues or concerns relating to greenhouse gas emissions. And so as part of this proposed contract, if it were to be approved, Sher Edling would investigate and evaluate potential issues as it relates to Baltimore County and then be able to make a determination whether, as far as what options the county may have. I really can't say whether a particular company, you know, in this instance, or other instances where they have, I just can't say whether that they would be able to be a potential party or the county to move towards a potential lawsuit. Just can't say right now, sir.
So what you're saying is it would, it's possible that a company who pollutes, which pollutes, but however, they have adhered to all laws in place at the time, presently at the time that the, the operation took place, that they possibly could be sued, that it would have to be a case-by-case situation. I, I would think there'd have to be other circumstances in place for them to be sued. I wouldn't, you know, if you adhere to the law, just because the law doesn't, isn't up to isn't up to date, so to speak, about, uh, emission standards, et cetera, uh, that, that company could still be sued. I, you know, I, I guess I don't want to see a, uh, situation where you have a private law firm uh, with the idea, oh my gosh, we can get these huge legal fees uh, by going every, uh, after every company, uh, you know, e- every, every, uh, uh, producer of petro- petroleum or whatever. And this, this is the part that concerns me because the government has to, is responsible for some of the problem. Government really is because the government did not have standards in place which would have protected the environment. So how do you hold a private company responsible for something that a government didn't really take proper action is so.
I understand your concern.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but that being said, you, you, you're asking about hypothetical, um, uh, situations. And it would really depend on the particular facts that are uncovered, you know, as part of any investigation or evaluation, sir.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm very much an environmentalist, as you, you must know, but I, I also don't like the idea that we're going to be going after people who have adhered to the law forever. Uh, so that, that's just a comment and I don't know how I'm going to vote on the bill because I, I'm not sure that I totally feel comfortable. That's, that's why I brought up the, the situation with the cigarettes. Because these companies were found to have documentation that warned them about the dangers of smoking. And they basically chose to keep those documents secret to not let the public know or the government know. And I think that was a good reason to sue them. I have no problem with that, but, uh, you know, in, in these cases, I, I, I just don't know. I don't, I don't want to see a situation where Baltimore County is just going after companies to get money. And that's the only purpose of, of what we're doing. And I know nothing about this law firm. I hope that's not their, uh, MO that they go, just go after any company that they think they might, uh, realize, uh, legal fees from it. So that, that's my concern with this, uh, proposal.
Well, I understand what you're saying, sir, and I, and, and I get the sense that your, your concern is that you just don't want the lawsuit be filed willy nilly, you know, without, um, doing the necessary, um, uh, due diligence, investigation, evaluation, and I would let you and the other members know that should this, uh, contract be, uh, approved, uh, the, uh, firm would definitely be doing a thorough, um, assessment, uh, investigation and evaluation of the, uh, uh, issues to be able to determine whether or not, um, there's a viable claim.
Now, I would feel a lot better if you told me that, okay, after the company does this investigation, that, uh, they would like to go forward with the case. Would you then have to approve it or do they have the ability with this contract to go ahead and sue?
Well, it would, it would be something where they would, uh, meet with, um, uh, myself, and then I would discuss the issues with the administration. I would also be happy to discuss the issue with the council.
What, would you then, could you then tell them, we don't think that this is legitimate, or we don't think that this case is strong, so don't pursue it?
I think that if they were to provide analysis as part of investigation or evaluation, that would suggest that a lawsuit would not be, uh, um, successful, then, um, we would then have the term the ability to make, be able to make that, uh, uh, call.
Um, so, so you would be able to stop the, okay, if they come to you, they've done the research and they, uh, want to pursue a case and you tell them, no, the county doesn't want to do this, would we then owe them fees for the work they've done up to that point? If, if the county decides not to go forward with the case?
Pursuant to the, uh, proposed, um, uh, contract, the, uh, there's no fiscal impact, um, unless the county successfully resolves its, uh, uh, claim. So if the determination is made based upon the evaluation and investigation, that there is no, not to go forward with the, uh, uh, suit, then, uh, I do not believe that, uh, there would be any fiscal impact to the county.
No.
That's something I could, go ahead.
But my question was if they do the research and think that we have a good case and yet the county decides not to go forward with the case, would then the county be liable for the fees that this company has, uh, expen- expended, uh, to do research or whatever? And you realize what I'm saying is if the county decides not to go forward with it, but they think the county has enough evidence to go forward. Those they recommend to you, we should go forward and you say no. So are we protected about with, uh, any fees that we might have to, uh, pay under that circumstance?
Well, that's something that as far as I, I would have, I would look at the, um, uh, proposed, uh, contract with a little bit more, you know, I could review, re-review it, but as I see it, you know, I guess there may be a, a potential for, I guess what's called equitable, uh, uh, relief. But again, you know, we're looking at any cost, expenses being paid out of a, um, uh, recovery. Uh, either a judgment or a, um, uh, settlement. So I do not see at this point, uh, fiscal, uh, uh, impact between now and the vote on, um, on Monday, I could look at that a little bit, um, uh, deeper and then follow it with you and other members as, um, needed.
Yeah, I, I will ask the same question on Monday then, because I certainly uh, don't want the county in a position where they're recommending we go forward with the case. The county decides that we don't want to. And under those circumstances, I would think the county would be liable for some to pay these expenses or part of these expenses because the decision to not go forward would be the county's decision, not the law firm's decision. So, so that, that's okay?
We'll be, we'll be happy to discuss further Monday.
Thank you.
Great, Councilman Cork.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Chairman Jones. Uh, Mr. Benjamin, um, can you give us an example of maybe how this might in, in practical terms? Um, be, be approached, for example, I mean, are, are there different, um, companies that basically would be um, targeted or can you give us an example of how this might work in, um, in today's world?
I mean, I think that's something that goes to, uh, you know, potential legal, uh, uh, strategy. So I think that in this forum, I wouldn't be able to really answer that, sir.
You couldn't give us a hypothetical?
Well, I mean, it, it, it really depends on the end of, the fact, the information that, uh, the firm would uncover as part of its, uh, uh, investigation. But as far as what you're asking me, uh, how they would go about, uh, uh, doing that, you know, that's something that because that could implicate potential legal strategy, that's something that I'm uncomfortable discussing in this form, sir.
Have, have they, um, been successful, uh, other places against, uh, different, um, companies or firms uh, that, that you could tell us about?
It is, it is my understanding that they have, um, uh, been, uh, uh, successful and I can certainly uh, forward this, uh, uh, bodies of additional, uh, uh, information in that, uh, uh, regard. And as I said, I know that they have filed, um, a similar type of suits, uh, in uh, Maryland as well as, uh, other, um, uh, jurisdictions. And so they're looking to see, or they would look to see whether or not, uh, there may be a viable claim for the county. I'm, I'm happy to, uh, share that, uh, information and can discuss that further if, with this body, if it wishes on Monday.
Yeah, I, I'd like to get some examples of maybe some of the past stuff, really try to understand the scope of this more. Uh, because after all, any of these lawsuits, and I know attorneys are always hungry for fees and generating fees and, you know, can basically look under any rock to try to find legal fees anywhere, looking for low hanging fruit. And, and basically that's what a lot of these things are about is feeding legions of attorneys, in my view. Um, and so, yeah, I'd, I'd be interested in, um, looking at some examples. But we, I think the county council needs to remember that these type things aren't just like paid for with some magical pot of gold. Um, often a lot of these costs, if successful, like this loss successful, they get passed on to the consumer. They get passed on to regular, average people that really uh, often wind up paying the price through indirect costs. So, yeah, this is something that, yeah, I'll look at, I'll look at what you're sending, uh, Mr. Benjamin. But, um, you know, I'm, I'm a, a little, uh, a little cautious on this one. So I'll look at the information you sent.
Let me just say this too, keep in mind, in regard to this matter, if this were to, uh, go forward, um, as far as a lawsuit, uh, the contingency, uh, uh, fee that would be paid to this, uh, uh, firm would be, uh, from the, uh, uh, financial recovery as awarded, um, uh, you know, by a jury or by, uh, uh, courts. There wouldn't be a fiscal impact on the, uh, consumer, at least as I see it at this point. Uh, so it's just important to keep that in mind, but I'll be sure to, to share additional information as far as, um, other, uh, verdicts or resolutions, uh, for your consideration, uh, for Monday.
No, no, I appreciate that, but I also respectfully disagree. When a lot of these verdicts come down, uh, what a lot of companies will do is they'll pass these costs on um, to their consumers, whether directly or indirectly. Um, and, and so, yeah, I, I'll look for what you have to send, but, um, I'm also not very, um, very inclined to jump on some of these, uh, ambulance chasing type of legal strategies out there nationwide that I think, um, often are more about feeding law firms as opposed to, you know, really doing, uh, doing good work. But I could be wrong. I'll look at some examples. I'll keep it up in mind, but I'm a little hesitant. Thank you.
Well, look forward to continue the discussion on Monday, sir. Thank you.
Any additional questions to?
Yeah, mister, uh, yeah, uh, Mr. Benjamin, um, if you have any, okay, if this law firm decides they want to investigate a company and, um, they ultimately decide, you know, the company's fine, they didn't do anything. Uh, the company itself probably would have to hire a lawyer or have one on staff and probably would need the staff to do a lot of work. So even if the comp, the company, what's the company name that we're contracting with?
Share Edling.
Okay, so if they, uh, determine that the company has done nothing wrong, we've still had that company, uh, spend money to, in essence, cooperate with this law firm. And, you know, I, I'm like Councilman Cork said, I, I just would be very upset to find out that this law firm is just going out looking for companies to sue. Um, and, and because every time you look at a company, uh, like this, you're going to impose expenses on that company, which will, of course, uh, consumers will be the ones to ultimately pay the price. So just, just making it a statement, that, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Ed. I do have a, uh, question for you, uh, Mr. Benjamin. I'm curious, uh, if this is about, uh, climate change, uh, what gives, uh, what makes Baltimore County government have standing? And why wouldn't everyone in the world have standing?
Well, it goes, as I said before, um, it appears based upon different, uh, reports that we've, uh, uh, seen that, uh, greenhouse, um, uh, gas emissions have had a significant and adverse impact on the environment, including here in the county. So, uh, for that, um, uh, reason, that would, um, uh, give the, uh, uh, the county standing to be able to bring the suit should, um, it, uh, elect to, uh, uh, do so if this, uh, contract is approved, uh, by the, uh, uh, council. And, uh, other jurisdictions certainly would have the ability, you know, depending on, you know, the individual facts in their particular jurisdiction, to bring a similar, uh, uh, matter. Uh, I think that, as I said, that's going to be part of what this firm, uh, share everything would do. Uh, if, um, uh, the retainer is, uh, approved to be able to see exactly the specific information, facts to support a potential, uh, 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 suit. But based upon the documents that, um, uh, discussions that have been, uh, had, it would appear to me that, uh, there is, um, concern relating to the greenhouse gas emissions and the need to be able to look into it further to see whether it's, it's something that could be a viable claim.
Okay, so in other words, yes, hypothetically speaking, it goes like this, right? Let me, tell me if I'm thinking, there's climate change, therefore these one hundred year storms are getting them more frequent, two and three out of the last five years. Therefore, the monies that we spend to help mitigate those storms will be our damages. Is that the way, is that the way this sort of works?
Well, that certainly would be something that would be, um, uh, looked at. And, and as far as looking at the potential, uh, damages, what has the county had to expend to be able to deal with uh, the issues relating to these, um, uh, uh, storms that have been more, um, uh, uh, frequent and more, and stronger.
Okay, and so last question. So what then, uh, separates, I guess, for example, the manufacturer of a of a petroleum product and the person who sells a petroleum product and the person who drives down the road in the big eight cylinder giant pickup truck with, you know, because they run into the grocery store. What would separate those people? And the lawsuit in terms of culpability?
Well, I mean, I, I think, well, it depends on, I guess, the particular facts, um, involved in the, uh, uh, case. I mean, if you, if there was, uh, you know, deception or certain information that was known that was not shared, you know, maybe someone, I mean, that could present, um, a level, a certain level of, uh, uh, culpability. It really depends on the particular facts, uh, as we go forward investigating a potential, um, uh, claim.
Okay. Miss, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Ed.
Uh, with the cigarette, uh, suit, that was the Attorney General of Maryland, uh, who did that. And, uh, when we got the settlement, it was divided among the various jurisdictions. Uh, along with what the chairman said, uh, the greenhouse gas situation affects the whole state. So why? So why wouldn't uh the county then recommend to the Maryland Attorney General that uh he pursue this on behalf of all the citizens of the state of Maryland?
Well, I mean, I think that the AG, the the Attorney General could certainly elect to make that um uh uh choice, but there's also the question specifically of the uh uh county and us be having a the ability to review and be able to see whether or not it's something that the county may want to do based upon its interest that could be separate from the uh AGs if it were to pu- to pursue something like that. It would just really depend and on what we ultimately find if we are uh going forward with this uh uh matter.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Benjamin. I guess we'll move on to page twenty. Ms. Stacy Rogers.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the council. Uh thank you uh very much. Um the administration is requesting an amendment to a contract with the law offices of Lisa M. Harris LLC doing businesses Harris Jones and Malone LLC to continue to provide labor relations services. The proposed amendment also extends the contract for two additional one-year renewal periods from December first twenty twenty-two through November thirty of twenty twenty-four. An increase um in the maximum compensation of the contract is one hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars uh for the uh for a total of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the entire amended five-year contract, uh including the renewal periods. The contract uh initially began in December of twenty nineteen. Um and Mr. Chair, as Deputy CEO Young uh in her introductory um meetings with you all reflected, we are, we moved into a two-year negotiation contracts with our bargaining units. And this year, we have a number of um large issues to negotiate. And we've had a lot of staff change in our uh labor relations uh support in the Office of Human Resources. And then, of course, with the departure of uh former Deputy uh CAO Vetter who did the primary uh labor negotiations work. Um we feel very strongly that we need this additional support. Um Mr. Malone, who has been with us and helping us to work through sometimes very, very complicated um labor negotiations, is familiar with uh the county's um labor unions and the critical issues that are facing us. Uh that is the reason why we are requesting to extend this contract. I'd be happy to take any questions that you and the uh council members may have.
Any questions or comments on the member?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go right ahead.
Yeah, um Ms. Rogers, uh I know we have a pretty extensive um county executive um exec level staff. Are are you are you saying that there's nobody on the executive staff that can can take this and 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 do it in-house? Uh as as you know, we just did on the county council quite extensive work in-house with the Comcast negotiations where and we're quite successful and I think saved the taxpayers a lot of money. So I I just wanted to ask you very directly. You're you're telling us you don't think there's anybody in the county exec's office that can handle this for us, so we have to pay money to get outside consultants?
I am saying that we need the support of uh Mr. Malone and and the firm because in this case, we have to negotiate in a very short period of time with multiple, multiple bargaining units. Some of them are very, very technical. Some of them uh have to do with extensive research, multiple uh bargaining units at a time. And no, it is my professional opinion that we do not have that internal capacity at this time because of the 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 timeframe that this work has to be done. We have to do this work uh starting with the opening of bargaining, which, of course, is November through mid-March for all bargaining units. So we don't have multiple years to do this. We have months.
Well, Ms. Ms. Rogers, correct me if I'm wrong, but I seem to recall when we first um went down this path that the comments from the county executive's office was Mr. Malone and his um his group would be temporary only because it was transitional and it was new. So has that position now changed?
Uh I wasn't here at that time. You'll recall, I came April first of twenty nineteen after the end of the first uh negotiation period. But I do know that the hope was that we would have a stronger bench on the human relation, um the human resources side that could uh take on this work and move with it. The last time I brought comment uh on this was about two years ago. And since that time, we've changed over that human resources staff uh twice from my from my um recollection. But the other piece is Deputy uh CAO Rebecca Young just arrived. And our chief executive staff negotiator at that time was Mr. Drew Vetter. In terms of the the division of the of of labor, we've got multiple issues facing us with our various bargaining units because we have multiple bargaining units that we have to get this work done in a very short period of time in a a thoughtful kind of way. And it does become, it takes on a life of itself. And it is my position as CAO that we need the support. And I would hope that you would support us.
Yeah, and I and I respect that. I I mean, I I think and maybe Mr. Bostick or somebody can correct me if my memory um isn't cor- isn't right, but I I do do think I recall that initially, this was supposed to be very temporary. It was a new administration. Um you know, we were going to bring in um this group to help us with these labor things, but it's only temporary. It was only transitional. And knowing that, we've had many years since that point in time to adjust and find somebody in-house. I mean, it's not like it was just yesterday. Uh this was a a bunch of years ago, some before your watch. I understand that. But I'm also, I'm also feeling like we were told something um you know, years ago, when we first brought them in. That was temporary, it was transitional, and now I'm hearing that it really wasn't. And so I've just just um wondering at what point does the county executive's office start to do more of this stuff in-house? Because from my observation, a lot of times when we have to do heavy lifting uh and the uh execs um level, we bring in consultant after consultant after consultant. And it makes me wonder, I'm like, okay, well, what are we doing in-house and how much more can we bring in-house to save the taxpayer uh money ultimately? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I would say that we work as hard as we can, sometimes twelve, fourteen hours a day to do everything that's required of us. So we're kindly asking the council to give us the support that we need in an area that we feel right now we do not. I can't speak for the past, but I can speak for the present. And this is something that we feel we need.
Any additional questions or comment? That's an observation, Ms. Rogers. Prior to this administration, these things were done in person. And uh I do recall Councilman Quirk, you're exactly right. At the beginning of the administration, there was new needed people to get you over the hump. Four years into this, going into year number five, we still need these people. And I understand people change, but the only new labor negotiation bargaining unit we have is the library. That's the only thing new under the sun. Uh everybody else is the same amount we've had for the last fifty years. Uh any additional questions or comment from the member? All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. We'll move on to um page twenty-four. Ms. Amy Horn. Property manager. Or 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 or, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I'll take this one. Thank you very much. Amy was benching for me in case like something happened. Um the administration is requesting the approval of an agreement with Blazegard Commercial Services to provide an automatic fire sprinkler servicing at various county operated and um owned facilities. The contract further acknowledges that it is not guaranteeing any maximum amount under work under this agreement and further acknowledges that in no event shall the compensation paid to a contractor under this agreement exceed the three million two hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-six cents. This is a one-year contract with four one-year renewals. It was a very competitive um contract that was done competitively based on low bid, best value, and most experience. This contract uh actually provides numerous things. They furnish and provide labor and material for repairing systems and installing any new systems we may need. It includes the inspections of our quarterly systems. And then it also incorporates our five-year re- uh testing that is required by the NFPA code um that was recently implemented in the last three years. I will gladly take any uh questions that you may have on this contract.
Any questions or comment? Hearing none, I guess we'll move right along with the uh page twenty-eight. Lease with Stevenson University.
Thank you very much. Uh this agreement provides the property uh lease of various buildings and furnished classroom space at the Stevenson University Greenspring Campus for the use of a training facility for the both police and fire departments, as well as the lease of the athletic field for the use of the department, uh Baltimore County Department of Recs and Park uh Parks. This lease will allow both police and fire the opportunity to expand their training classes by increasing the class capacity sizes to reduce vacancies and to ensure more staff can be placed in the community in a more expeditious fashion. The agreement, if approved, will start on December the first of twenty-two. It is um a fourteen-month lease uh with a w- right to uh one more additional year. The annual rent will be uh one million one hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars uh for the one year. It is providing us as a county the use of the Man- Mansu uh building, the Na- Knott Hall and the Carriage House, and the Rose Dawson Academy in addition to the field. Um as I stated before, it is um for the police and uh police and fire has very exclusive space in the facility for training purposes, which is about twenty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty square feet. And then in addition to that, we are also um sharing space with the university and leasing about fourteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-one, which is a total of forty-four thousand one hundred and ninety-one square feet. This lease um also includes uh they, it's almost a turnkey operation. They're providing the uh the cleaning of the space, all the utilities. They are actually supporting us in uh furniture with desks and chairs that we would need for training purposes and for staff and and trainers to be there. In addition to special uh specialized equipments like mats that would be used in our training purposes and access and use of all of the fitness equipment and their library that uh our cadets could use. One of the last points that I will make is that it also includes the use of the theater fifteen times a day, which will help with um graduations and other events that these um both police and fire um will be able to support. Um I would also like to mention that um Councilman Jones, with your permission, I know Madam A O has a few comments that she would like to add, if that's okay with you, sir.
Sure.
Thank you.
You uh thank you, Council Chair and Council Members. Just wanted to add a couple of points with respect to um the Stevenson University Greenspring Campus lease. Uh this effort is going to help us expand our existing training capacity. As you know, we have um significant vacancies in uh the police department and we have vacancies in fire as well. And what it enables us to do from the standpoint of new recruits is to have more people trained simultaneously uh which will enable us to have larger classes and then get people through the process a lot quicker. Um in many instances, given the restrictions on the space that we have available for training, we have to do uh two, sometimes three classes to try to get the number of recruits we need. Each class group that we ha- we offer does cost the county and it slows down that process of getting recruits through. So this uh training space will be in addition to what we have already with the community college. Um additionally, this uh training space is going to allow us to train and do some continuing education uh types of training where we can bring groups of employees together um that we don't have the training space for now. When we do continuing education training, a lot of times that's uh individuals going to other entities as opposed to us having the capacity to bring people together. And as a part of our uh reform efforts, we want to ensure that we have the best trained uh police workforce that we have, and this would help us in that area too.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. All right. Any questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman uh Pope.
Uh thank you. Um so to me, this relates to expanding professional development for our county workforce. And uh I think it's especially important for our public safety um agencies, police and fire. Um if I think all of us remember that this council had a robust discussion on police reform about two years ago. And part of the part of uh our deliberation uh dealt with police training and expanding that training and and we we ended up with the with the SMART Act, I think is what what uh what we called it at that time. And um so to me, this is taking the next step in police reform in stronger training for our public safety entities, our police department, our fire department uh to be prepared for any situation. Mr. Chair, you were a firefighter uh at one time in your career and and I think uh you know better than us that you never know what you're going to walk into um on a call. And so the better prepared you are, the better you are um your ability to address that call, whether it be police or fire. So I think uh anytime we get an opportunity as a council to make a decision that broadens our ability to uh create professional development opportunities, we should take advantage of that. And especially as it relates to our public safety entities, police and fire. Uh having said that, I just have one question, Ms. Rogers, that I forgot to ask you when we had a discussion about this. Is on the um fire side, is this training facility for both career and volunteer firefighters?
Um Ms. Ms. Shindel, can you answer that one?
I can. Um when I spoke to Chief Rudd and we toured the site, she indicated that, yeah, she would be using this for both career and for volunteers to get trained, especially the EMS uh division of of um of the fire department.
Well, that's great. Uh with um the the opioid problem uh growing, um unfortunately, EMS cir- calls have uh greatly increased over the past few years. So thank you uh for the briefing. I just wanted to add uh some thoughts on on um this facility.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Ted.
Yeah, uh for uh Ms. Rogers, uh is the college interested in, is that property for sale or you know, because to me, it sounds like would be a prime opportunity for us to I mean, if we could purchase that property, uh because because I'll tell you, all the uses that you talked about are certainly needed in the county and but anyhow, go ahead.
Yes, sir. There are parallel discussions with the university about potential purpose. I mean, purchase, but those discussions were not moving quick enough. As I said, that train wasn't running fast enough for us to try to, you know, wait because we need training space now. But yes, indeed, there's some funding that the state of Maryland did provide, but there's a lot of discussions going on on that side. I was responsible for the leasing, you know, this interim step, but there are many discussions within, between the administration and the Susan University Administration about that. So more to come. There are a lot that have to be sorted out, but we we find that the space is ideal for the needs, training needs that we have, because we really, CCBC is a wonderful partner, and we'll continue to partner with them and use space. But our training needs are beyond what they can help us with now.
Now, I talked with Councilman Patoka, and we both think there should be siren training at that campus. So if, you know, hopefully you'll be able to work something out. I would think that the volunteer fire companies need that kind of training and and we've got to make sure that everybody hears the sirens as they're going off. So I I tried to help you, Councilman Patoka.
Thank you so much, Councilman Catch. Always appreciate your support.
Oh, no problem at all. So you know, I think I can get a volunteer fire company to donate their siren for this cause. So, okay?
Thank you.
Councilmember Catch.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay, great. We will move on to page thirty-two. Mr. Rob O'Connor.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the council. I have three fiscal matters before you this evening. Also joining me tonight are my chief technology officer, Tom DeLuca, deputy director, Chris Martin, and chief of applications, Heather White. She will be presenting fiscal matter number nine this evening. They are joining as they will be doing more fiscal matters moving forward. But let me get started with fiscal matter number eight, sir. As the council and administration is aware, the county has been working very hard to close the gaps within the digital divide. One of the items that came back from our survey, of countywide survey, was that one of the top needs in the county was a lack of a device per household. That being said, the administration is requesting approval of a contract for electronic recycling agreement with PCs for People. They are a five hundred C three nonprofit corporation to refurbish and redistribute eligible retired electronic equipment, computers, printers, laptops donated by Baltimore County at a low cost, at a low cost to the county, individuals and families who meet certain income requirements. The contract commences upon council approval, continues for one year, and may be renewed for four additional one-year periods. The contract does not specify a maximum compensation for the one-year term for the entire five-year term, including the renewal periods, because PCs for People provide the service at no cost to the county.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Now, like very worthwhile call, move right along for the next fiscal matter. The next item.
Heather.
Page forty-three-six.
That's me. The administration is requesting approval of a master services agreement with Collaborative Solutions LLC to provide post-production support services for the county's Workday Enterprise Resource Planning System. The agreement commences upon council approval, continues through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and will renew automatically for two additional one-year periods. The agreement does not specify a maximum compensation for the initial approximate one-year and one-month term or for the entire approximate three-year and one-month term. Estimated compensation totals one point two million for the entire approximate three-year and one-month term, including the renewal periods, and will be based upon individual statements of work.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, moving right along to page forty. Exxon Enterprise.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The administration is requesting approval of the contract with Exxon Enterprise. As you recall, we came to the council in twenty sixteen with a contract for Exxon for body worn cameras. This contract is to also provide body worn cameras, but also conduct electrical weapons, tasers, recording, recording equipment related peripherals, software subscriptions and services for the police department. The office has advised that the proposed contract is intended to consolidate and replace the two existing contracts for such equipment currently in use, and also for future products for the department. The contract commences upon council approval, continues through January fourteenth, twenty-thirty, and may be renewed for additional, for one additional two-year period. Compensation may not exceed the amount appropriated for the services for the entire contract term. Estimated compensation totals of twenty-one million, seven hundred fifty-eight thousand, five hundred seventy-six dollars for the initial approximate seven-year, two-month term, and thirty-one thousand, five hundred for the entire approximate nine-year, two-month term, which also includes the renewal period. And I also do want to state that the negotiation, the consolidation of these contracts, we did go back with a second negotiation counteroffer, and were able to reduce the contract by an additional seven hundred and some thousand dollars. So it was also a fiscal advantage for the county moving forward with this consolidation. They also, finally, the additional need is that we have to supply four hundred seventy-nine additional body worn cameras under new state legislation to meet all full strength for the Baltimore County Police Department.
Thank you very much. Mr. O'Connor, any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, thank you very much. We'll move on to page one. That would be me, Bill seventy-four dash twenty-two, zoning regulations, off-street parking requirement. This is one of them situations where business came to me, we're trying to locate here in Owens Mills, and we were looking at the parking requirements, and we realized that parking requirements are significantly out of date. I reached out to Inspector Gutwold, I mean, Director Gutwold, we discussed it, and we came up with some changes that we think that will be more current, more useful to apply to this particular application. So that's what this is about. And are there any questions or comments for me? And I know we have a couple of speakers to talk about it. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. Councilman Crandall?
Yeah. Councilman Jones, is this a county, countywide bill? Or something that pertains to this particular location?
I believe this is a countywide bill. Basically, one second. Basically, the bottom line is this is a scenario where we have a business that is sort of in between two other businesses. And I, and this is they should not be required to have the same amount of parking requirement as a retailer. In other words, the issue as it relates to parking requirement, there's no difference right now between someone that's doing retail like a big box store, so to speak, or I'm not going to use some of the names that, you know, we all know, some of the biggest, the only big department stores around nowadays that sell all kinds of goods, and some of the other stores that may have an awful lot of product, but is basically acting as a warehouse at the same time. And people can come in and buy the stuff that is there stored for them, some similar to, I guess, I don't know, I guess I shouldn't have to be cloaking that. If you look at like the Walmart or something like that, you have certain parking requirements. You look at some of the other stores that are similar to a warehouse store, and the idea would, we would come up with another sort of a name for another category that would fit businesses that have tremendous amounts of space, but it's almost like the citizen is walking, or the customer is walking for a warehouse. And similar, if you think about like the difference between them and like the Home Depot, is you wouldn't be able to go in there and buy a small item. These are like big items. People would buy big lots of items. And and those type of businesses probably should not, I believe, be required to have the same parking requirement. And there was, there's been a study done, and there's research and data behind what I'm saying, and I'll wait for one of the speakers to explain it a little further. But that's why you would not need all the same parking requirements as other businesses. This would be like another category.
Okay. Well, that was a long answer to a yes or no question. But thank you for the clarification.
Sure. Okay. Miss Felk, our first speaker.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. We only have one speaker for this bill, and that is David Karshewski.
Okay.
Mr. Karshewski, you are now a panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Thank you, Ms. Hewitt. Good evening, Chairman Jones and members of the county council. I'm testifying in support of this council bill, which is number seventy-four dash twenty-two. The purpose of it is to update a subsection in the county's off-street parking regulations. Those are all contained in section four or nine of the zoning code. There's a specific section that addresses the parking requirements for a number of different quote-unquote "commercial uses," and that's the subject of the bill. I represent Floor and Decor. They're a national and leading specialty retailer of hard surface flooring and other materials for building improvement. They're in the process of redeveloping a site on Reisterstown Road in Owens Mills for one of their new stores. The site was formerly used in a manufacturing capacity, and the building that had existed on the site for many years has been razed. The property is a prime candidate for improvement and redevelopment along the Reisterstown Road corridor. The comp, the parking regulations, as you know, were last comprehensively updated decades ago. There's a very broad quote-unquote "retail" category that Councilman Jones just alluded to for off-street parking requirements. And it, and it, and it also has not been updated in a comprehensive way. Broadly speaking, retail uses under the parking regs require five spaces per thousand, as Councilman Jones pointed out. Over time, tweaks have been made to the parking regulations to better accommodate individual use categories and to better recognize different parking needs. Floor and Decor, as Councilman Jones pointed out, performed a parking spaces usage study that included multiple existing stores across the country to determine the actual amount of parking those stores use on a daily basis that their patrons use. And the findings were that on average, about one space per thousand square feet of building space is needed, one space. There is a much more appropriate existing parking spaces category than retail that could be expanded to accommodate a use like Floor and Decor. That's the target of the legislation here. And to better accommodate the true number of spaces that a business like this would use, the existing category, it's really quote-unquote "furniture and carpet store," could be expanded to include building supplies retail store. That doesn't have a ratio of one per thousand. It has a ratio of two point five per thousand. So this legislation is really an opportunity to improve the parking regulations, which Councilman Jones has recognized. We thank him for introducing the legislation. As he pointed out, the Department of PAI has been consulted on the language that that has been put into this bill as it was introduced. And the legislation is necessary to update the parking regulations for this type of use to remove this type of business from needing to unnecessarily provide two times as many parking spaces, even more than two times as many parking spaces as it, as needed on the site. Thank you for your time.
Chair, if I may go again?
Yes, Councilman Crandall.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just was recalling a bill that we had all worked on several years ago where we, if I recall correctly, we were working on parking regulations for a trampoline park. And we've talked many times on this council how the nature of retail is changing. And the code is not up to speed on how retail is changing. And I think your bill probably works in the, in the spirit of that, that we need to bring our code up to how different uses are coming to Baltimore County. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Crandall. I know that it is something that's on the radar of the director. And however, he recognizes this is a monumental task, and, you know, so many times we're constantly doing everything we can to keep the ball in the air. But I know Director Gutwold, that is something that he's been thinking about, or certainly on his radar to do. Any additional questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
So just to piggyback on Councilman Crandall's comments, I think I've shared in the past that the basic framework of our zoning code is based on retail as it existed a long time ago, and office space as it existed pre-pandemic. And so that framework has changed so dramatically, where office space behaves very differently than it used to, and retail behaves very differently than it used to. And at some point, the, we, the council, along with with the appropriate agencies, need to to take a look at that and how to unpack the zoning code and modify it for the way we behave as consumers and our workforce today. And I don't know how this will fit in, but I just wanted to make that statement that that, you know, that's out there. The other, I do have one question. I don't know if it's for you or Mr. Karshewski. But the, does this have any impact on not faith-based institutions and nonprofits? So for example, is this limited to just commercial? I guess, let me get to the point. I wanted, wanted to see if it impacts very if it has any impact on, you know, mega churches in areas changing the parking requirement, or not just churches, but any faith, any institution like that? Or is this a separate?
This is just for commercial.
This is just for commercial?
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Karshewski. And, you know, if anybody have any additional comment, feel free to reach out. Only thing I would add is, you know, this is development in an area that, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I'm very focused on trying to develop, get some things done. We're talking about property that's been vacant for many, many years. And this particular location, this is where the Lyon Brothers was. So it'd be real good to get something there and have some attention to the Reisterstown Road corridor other than, you know, Downery Road, which is very nice.
Mr. Chairman. Just want you to know, when I was the delegate for that area, we had no problems with vacant buildings. Everything was great. So I don't, I left in nineteen ninety-four, so I don't know what's happened, but it's good to hear that you're trying to turn it around and bring it back.
Well, you know, Councilman Catch, you know, we do our best. Maybe you can come and, you know, do like a special appearance and come and help us out from time to time, starting with this vote.
Sounds good.
Councilman Catch, so are you saying, I don't know what the acronym would be, but Make the Northwest Great Again?
Yeah, I mean, if it's possible, yeah.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. That's my only comment.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
For anyone listening, I'm only kidding. Yeah, but go ahead.
All right, we will move on to Bill, page two, Bill seventy-five twenty-two. And I know Ms. Beavins is not here today. So what we're going to do is, I mean, Mr. Boswood, you can explain what this zoning regulation will be.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So section two fifty-three point one I of the zoning regulations Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, so section two fifty-three point one I of the zoning regulations uh deals with the M L zone, um, and it deals with residential uses uh in the M L zone. And the residential uses, that there are locational requirements for, for residential uses uh in the M L zone uh on a certain sized development tract. Um, one being it has to be at least ten acres, uh, it has to be located uh within a certain uh, a distance of the B M C T District of White Marsh. And it also uh is part of a contiguous area of two hundred acres or more of M L zoning west of Interstate ninety-five. In addition, uh, the combined tract areas developed for residential uses can't occupy more than six percent of the particular contiguous area of the M L zoning uh in which they're located. Uh, this bill uh would cl- clarify the applicability um of, of these locational requirements. It would reduce the, the ten acres in size to four acres, um, and it would also um amend the it would also amend the uh percentage of contiguous area of M L zoning, the combined tracks can, can occupy uh from eleven percent to sixteen percent. So those are the two main um uh changes to the existing regulation. And I'm sure Mr., I think Mr. Karzuski is testifying on this one and he'll, he'll be able to probably shed some more detail on it as well.
Are there any questions or comments from the members?
Chairman.
Councilman Marks.
Thank you very much. Um, this affects an area that will be in my new district uh after December fifth. Uh, I am very supportive of a new vision for White Marsh Mall. I've talked about it uh several times in these work sessions and at the legislative sessions. I think uh reimagining the mall and, and adding density uh could be part of the solution. I want to look at transportation, a lot of other elements. I say this because, uh, you know, we really do need to examine that overall strategy for the White Marsh Town Center. I've expressed to Mr. Karzuski and others that I am getting concerned about the impact of all this density on schools. You know, we, we've just opened a new elementary school. We have a new middle school in the pipeline and uh I hope we are taking steps to make sure that these apartments are marketed for seniors and uh not just for all types of families. Uh, with having that, with that being said, um, you know, I look forward to talk, continuing to talk to the developers and the overall business community as we reimagine White Marsh and um hopefully those discussions will begin soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? This Phil Castro, let's hear from the speaker.
Certainly. Um, again, Mr. Karzuski. Mr. Karzuski, you're a panelist again.
Thank you again. Uh, good evening again, Chairman Jones, members of the council. I'm here on behalf of Federal Realty Investment Trust to speak in support of Bill number seventy-five twenty-two. We would like to thank Councilman Bevins, Bevins for introducing the legislation, for her time, as well as for the time Councilman Marks has given us uh in discussing this legislation and, and the project as well. And we, and we'll continue to discuss it with, with both of them. Uh, Bill seventy-five twenty-two, as Mr. Boswick alluded to, would allow residential use to be developed on certain M L zone property. It's only in the White Marsh area, and as he stated, it's only under certain conditions. Um, the, the original bill, which was Bill number sixty-six seventeen, uh, did allow residential use in close proximity to the B M C T District of White Marsh. Uh, specifically, specifically that allowed for a residential community called Avenue Grand to be developed, which was a luxury, which is a luxury apartment project on about twelve acres. Uh, it's west of the Avenue of White Marsh. Uh, that project has been very much of a huge success. Um, Federal Realty Investment Trust now has an opportunity. It does own the Avenue of White Marsh, which is very close to the Avenue, and also very close to the White Marsh Mall, which Councilman Marks. Uh, the opportunity here, and they're very excited about it, is to add a residential component to their mixed-use lifestyle development. Uh, the most recent improvement there, which some of you may be aware of, uh, was the construction of a multi-use recreational area uh at the center of the project, really to be used during all seasons. So the Avenue of White Marsh is also zoned, zoned up, zoned M L as it, which is the zone that this bill calls for. Uh, the specific area at the avenue on which Federal Realty is planning to add residential use is now paved. It's excess parking, and for anyone familiar with the Avenue of White Marsh, it, it is behind the T G I Fri- T G I Friday's Restaurant Building. Uh, those parking spaces are not needed to support any tenants or their patrons at the avenue now. There's clearly a higher and better use for that area of the, of the avenue. Uh, Federal Realty has studied the surrounding White Marsh area. They know the market and they know there is a market for residential use at the avenue. Um, the existing M L zone classification would not allow for residential without the legislation. Uh, the, the bill is a real opportunity to achieve a complete mixed-use development other, unlike any other in the White Marsh area. As Mr. Boswick stated, uh, that, that the qual, the qualifications or the hurdles or the requirements that are in the bill and have been in the bill since twenty-seventeen are still there. Uh, they relate to development tract size. They relate to distance from the B M C T. He did mention those. So we are requesting the increase in the total amount or the total area within the larger M L tracts to be increased so that Federal Realty may add uh a residential component to the avenue that will improve and complement the mixed-use nature of, of the project as it is today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Karzuski. Any additional questions? Are any other speakers, Mr. Phil Castro?
Not for this bill, Mr. Chair.
Any questions or comments from the members? No? All right, we will move right along to page twelve, no, page three, uh, Councilman Marks.
Thank you. Bill seventy-six twenty-two, correct?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Bill seventy-six twenty-two uh clarifies the applicability of the special regulations for C T districts in a B R zone. It will also include a property that's owned B R with a C T district overlay. Uh, and as of the date of submission of a concept plan is, one, within an employment center as designated in the master plan twenty-twenty, and, two, located within five hundred feet of a right-of-way associated with the High six ninety-five, and, three, does not abut a property containing a single-family dwelling. And like Councilwoman Beavens' bill, this applies to generally to an area, a specific area in the county. Uh, in this case, uh, in the, the Lock Raven um, uh, business area bordering the Beltway. Uh, I have discussed this bill with uh Councilman-elect Urteil. Um, he's been briefed on it. My understanding is he does not oppose the bill. Uh, I also have uh looked at the school capacity numbers for the three schools that serve this area. They are, they are below capacity. This would allow for um potentially a, a residential project in that area. Uh, one of the things I have really tried to do during my tenure as councilman is to try to revitalize that, that corridor along Lock Raven Boulevard, budding up the Joppa Road. And uh, this legislation would help realize that goal. So again, that's a specific area. Uh, the bill has been shared with the incoming council member and uh the schools within this district are all below capacity. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, um, Councilman Catch.
Uh, Councilman Marks, uh, how close is this to my district?
Uh, it's in the Luskins Hill area.
Right, okay, okay. So, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions or comments from the members? Uh, Ms. Phil Castro, do we have a speaker here?
No, Mr. Chair, we do not have a speaker on this bill.
Okay, I guess we have two for the next one.
That's correct.
We'll move on to page four, Bill seventy-seven dash twenty-two. Councilman Marks.
Thank you very much. Uh, Bill seventy-seven twenty-two amends the Metropolitan District benefit charges for connections to irregularly shaped lots under normal conditions and individual properties of water and sewer benefit assessments are based upon the property's frontage. Um, this legislation would amend this to say that if there are certain environmental constraints such as topography and geography, soils and distance to improvements, um, the lot is not required to pay charges for the benefit unless or until it becomes possible for the lot to receive connection to the benefit. Um, simply put, this comes about from a situation where uh there's a sewer improvement project in the Perry Hall Manor neighborhood um, and the county, and I have been working on this very hard for the past few years. Um, and property owners are being assessed um for improvements, even though they will never um really benefit from those improvements. Um, and the sewer main is so remote as to never be reasonably utilized by the property. Um, I understand that the language in the bill is very broad and I'm trying to work with the administration to narrow the focus of the language. Um, you will hear from uh the property owner who brought this to my attention, Dave Meadows and his wife. And I think they can provide you with some, with some real-life perspective as to why um it's important to, to have this provision in the county code.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Any questions or comments from the members? Um, Ms. Phil Castro, the speaker, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Um, I believe Mr. and Mrs. Meadows are on as one attendee, so I'm just gonna make them, make it a panelist and I'm assuming that they're both on the same connection. Mr. Meadows? Mr. Meadows?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you now.
The technology was, you know, a little beyond me, so we've, we're, we've got it working. Um, yes, and good evening to the councilmen and, um, as Councilman Marks indicated, really, I think that this is, is really an unintended consequence. Certainly, um, the work the county is doing um for older communities that have failing systems um is, is a wonderful thing for the county. Um, our property um happens to have a very minor um, uh, footprint or that, you know, that actually is on this road. In fact, we're almost on the end of the road that's where the um, where the um, where the sewer will be. And um, we're hundreds of feet below um the um, the actual, where our house is. Um, so my wife and I are here today to testify in favor of the bill, which not only will benefit our property, but also similar situated properties uh from being assessed a benefit assessment uh for a utility improvement, um, which will never actually be utilized by our property. Um, I'm also here uh with our neighbor, uh, um, who has a very similar property um, that Mark Gray adjacent to us. Um, has a background, um, my wife and I purchased our properties as our home uh for the use of our two growing boys in April two thousand and three. When we purchased the property, um, it had a gravel driveway that was leading down to a cottage, which we later improved as our home. The property has no real frontage on Miller Road, which is the road where the sewer is going to be installed, um, other than a fifty-foot-wide driveway and a twenty-foot strip along a stream. Uh, in two thousand and five, um, the property consists of eight acres, um, and surrounded by the Gunpowder State Park. Uh, in two thousand and five, we completed the minor subdivision process, subdividing our property into three lots. During that process, we granted a forced conservation easement uh to the county for four acres. And our home now consists of a four-acre lot and each lot, and, and the, and two lots, each one about two acres in size. Uh, when we learned that the county was intending to install the sewer uh to replace failing septic systems within the Perry Hall Manor subdivision, we had no idea that our property would be included. Our property is not part of the subdivision um with, with only minor frontages on Miller Road and our property um is much larger than the half-acre lots within the Manor subdivision. Further, our septic system is a modern, a properly functioning system. We've had it checked. Um, and each lot's septic reserve area that is, was approved and was just recently re-improved as having suitable soils for the installation of septic systems. Uh, when we inquired um as to why our property uh was included in this proposed project with, where many other large properties along Miller Road were not, we were told that since the proposed sewer line runs along Miller Road uh in front of our property, the county code uh that we're talking about here uh would mandate that a Metropolitan District charge uh be added to our tax bills, even though we have chosen not to participate in the project and even though it is apparent that our properties could not, without great expense, utilize the proposed sewer. While we do have minor frontage on Miller Road, our home is over a hundred yards well, uh, below Miller Road and it's significantly down a, a hill. Um, and our home site would, and the other two lots' home sites would be over two hundred yards uh below Miller Road. So without really any access to Miller Road for the installation of a sewer. Um, when the, the project is proposing the sewer along Miller Road, um, however, the homeowners uh are required to then install the, the line. Uh, in this case, it would be up almost two hundred yards uh to Miller Road to make the connection, which will also require uh grinding pumps and all kinds of other things uh that would be just inappropriate. Um, like most uh of Kingsville, our home is in a well-maintained, uh, well-inseptic system. Uh, as previously committed by the county, in two thousand and twenty-two, we recertified each lot for the proposed septic soils, which were suitable. Um, as noted in this proposed amendment, in such cases where because of topography, geography and distances from the proposed improvement, it would not be possible without great effort and expense to utilize um the connection. Uh, there should not be subject to a Metropolitan charge. And, and in our case, we would never um think of connecting in light of the great distances and elevations involved. The um, finally, again, I would commend the county for its efforts in the Perry Hall Manor subdivision and other older communities throughout the county. The amendment proposed herein simply ensures that our property and other like properties uh would not be inappropriately, inappropriately included and would never be in, in, in these improvements that would never, um, would never be utilized in, in our case. As I said, my wife is here with us um today and um, uh, Mr. Gray is also here. His property actually has no frontage on Miller Road, um utilizes of our easement area uh for his access to his property. Um, he has three acres, um, and right next to his property is a, is a, uh, another home and they're not included, um, and they're only, you know, fifty feet away. So I think in this case, it's really an unintended consequence of the statute um that um, um, properties that um are not suitable for connection um should be included. And um, if there's any other questions or comments, uh, I'd like to answer them.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, uh, Councilman Catch.
Yeah, uh, this, this, either Mr. Meadows or Councilman Marks, uh, is this bill retroactive?
Um, it's, it's prospective. It's not retroactive.
So, so people who would, are uh in this situation today who are charged this Metropolitan uh charge, uh, they would not benefit from this then. So you have a situation where some people will get this break and others have been made to pay it all along. Is, is that the situation that we have here?
Well, it's for a future project.
No, but I mean, let's say that somebody is in the same situation. Uh, it, they could have been charged this fee and are paying the fee, uh, even though they fit. even though they fit this legislation and and so if it were retroactive, those individuals who are in the same circumstances, Mr. Meadows and his neighbors, hopefully would get a refund or would not be, you know, paying this discharge. Because as Mr. Meadows said, he could never benefit from this sewer. There wouldn't be a sewer hookup for him, so that's why he shouldn't pay and it it sounds reasonable to me. But I'm thinking about the people in the past who are in the same situation who have been paying.
I understand that and it's and it's a larger discussion about over many years, over decades, about how even those who have limited means have had to pay for these charges. It's 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 a larger discussion more than this bill. I'm just trying to maybe make make this fix going forward.
And I mean, I don't have a problem with this legislation in regard to Mr. Meadows and his neighbors, none at all. I just am concerned about those people who you just mentioned, who have been forced to pay this fee and have never benefited from the sewer system. So, you know, I just see inequity here and that always concerns me.
Fair enough.
Well, I I'm going to give Ms. DeAndre Walker an opportunity to speak about the bill, but let me guess, help you a little bit. I certainly understand your your point. But I guess from my point of view, you know, if if you know, we try to right every wrong that we can. And unfortunately, we can't go back in time and undo every wrong that ever happened. All you can do is recognize it and do your best. I'm just saying that in terms of what may have happened to somebody in the past. Doesn't mean you should stick with something that's not right. So.
I I I I agree with you. I just want to make sure people realize there is inequity here.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, Ms. DeAndre Walker, you have a comment about this bill?
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the council. I just wanted to take an opportunity to share with the members of the council that the administration does have some concerns about the the possible financial impact associated with this bill as well as the equity associated with this bill. We are putting together an analysis that we are going to send to the council members after we've completed. Our analysis is just about done, but I did want to go on record to say that we do have some concerns primarily with the financial and the equity standpoint of the bill.
So the the financial part would be how much money are we talking about from these homeowners?
Sir, it depends. Each project is, there's a different cost associated with each project and that's part of what we will put into the analysis associated with this Perry Hall project in particular. There is a deferred program already. There is also a program available for residents to appeal once we've done the design and done the assessment. So there is a process in play. There is code already on the books that allows us a process for residents to appeal the benefit charge where we then take a look at it, but not having all of the information like the design, like the total assessment, like how far and where the sewer is going to go, I can't offer the appeal at this moment. So those are some of the things that I will put back into the analysis for you to see.
Okay, we'll see this. When will we when will we see?
You'll see it before Monday.
Okay. Councilman Clark?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, exactly what I was going to ask. Ms. Walker is really trying to understand when we would get this analysis and and really have have time to consider it as a council. I I definitely can understand the concerns. If there's an equity issue, are are we playing favors to maybe one community versus others? And that never really ends well. And so, yeah, I'm curious on the analysis and kind of Ms. Walker, where your department, Director Walker, where your department stands on this and we'll be waiting and then maybe the council can review it as well. I definitely think it's important. Thank you.
So did I? So did I'm clear? Analysis will let us know how much money the caller is required to pay?
No, because we don't have the the we don't have the full assessment. The design is being done right now for the project. We have an estimate cost of the project. I will give you that background. The estimated cost of the project, what the county is responsible for paying and what we believe the estimate is for the residents that are in this neighborhood right now. The bigger factor here, of course, is the size of these lots and how do you decide which lot does not get a benefit assessment when they have that pipe running near their home? So all of that will be a part of the write-up of the considerations we do when we do look at benefit assessments and who should be included.
And am I still able to speak?
Yes, sir.
Just briefly, and and again, I understand that that the county is working hard for the older community with the small lots. I mean, our position is we should have never been included in the project at all, like other large lot properties along Miller Road. And the as I emphasized in in the in the present of my presentation earlier was, the fact is that it's so far removed from our residential home and the Gray's residential home that it would be, it's basically never going to be benefiting our properties. They should have never been included. Because again, it's it's remedying the 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 situation dealing with the community. Our properties aren't part of the community. They just have a small abutment to a small area of Miller Road. And as I said, our house is a hundred yards below Miller Road. And it would be enormously expensive and 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 for anyone to think that you would want to access pump, you know, soil, soil, you know, sewer material over a hundred yards and then for our other two lots that are two hundred yards away. And it just doesn't, the project should not include this property for very specific reasons. It's just in a situation where it's not, has no feasible use and it's clear to that. I've actually, you know, to wait for the appeal. I mean, I actually spoke to the county's engineer and they indicated that that yes, when you finally get a notice, you could appeal it and then they'll probably reduce the amount. But the point is, we should have never been involved in the first place because we're not part of the community. What the county is trying to do is resolve a very significant, specific issue for an older community. And there are many properties along Miller Road that aren't included in this and plus the Gray's neighbor is not included in this because and they're just a few feet further down Miller Road. And it so it doesn't, it should not have been included in the property in the proposal at all. And that's what the idea here is to just to fix that situation where it's clearly appropriate that this property will never be sewed because it has high-quality, proper septic systems. And therefore, to say that somehow we should have a a benefit assessment on on a property that will never utilize the sewer, it doesn't make any sense. So I'm not sure what type of presentation you'll receive. I mean, we've asked to see, you know, how this project is supposed to work and they've never been able to provide us with any significant information to that respect. So I I don't know if Mr. Gray has anything to say, but it's it's we're, we understand that the county and actually the state has funding, help funding for this this older community. But our property isn't part of the community. And not only that, it's so far removed from the community because of the geographic situation with the 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 slopes and so forth that it's inappropriate to have us included. I guess that's what I want to say.
Okay, so let me real fast, I'm going to ask a quick question for you, Mr. Meadows. Have you built your house yet?
Yes, our house was built.
The other two lots are not built?
No, no, but they're even further. They're two hundred yards and well below. So we just went back in July of this year and got the county to reapprove those septic areas. I mean, we had re we had put those in fifteen years ago. We have two sons and we, you know, we we were having preparing for that to see if that would make sense. But they're even more remote. And
Now, I appreciate you calling. Appreciate you testifying. And I guess, are there any other questions for me?
I have one also.
Cat, I'll let you go and anybody else have a comment and then Councilman Marks, I'll give you the last word.
Yeah, Director Walker, is there a way that this can be moved so it won't impact these individual at all?
So sir, that goes back to equity. We try to look through.
No, 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 no. What I mean is since they aren't, they they're not going to be connecting. So I mean, does does the, what is being installed there? It's it's a what?
Is it a sewer line?
A pumping pumping station or what?
It's a sewer line.
Sewer line. So does it have to go past their properties in order to disturb the area that we're talking about?
Right. That's what they're in the process. That's what the engineers are in the process of doing now, the design.
So what I'm saying is I wonder if there's a way that can be designed so it won't be in front of those properties and so they wouldn't be assessed because they wouldn't couldn't benefit from it, basically. I I'm just asking if that's the case, but the engineers looking at that.
They're looking at the best option so that we can build an efficient sewer line. I can't say they can build it on this side and not on this side. I'm not the designer. I'm not the engineer, but I'm sure they're doing it in the safest way possible to meet the criteria to have a great sewer line.
Okay.
I do have a question because I always thought, I know we've been through this before, that if we extend the sewer line past people's property that already have an existing functioning septic system, that it is their option if they want to hook up to the new sewer line. They're not required to pay or do anything with the new sewer line unless they choose to. Am I wrong about that?
So there's two things. This is a petition. The benefit charge is for anybody that the sewer line runs by within a certain amount of distance. That's the benefit charge, but you don't have to connect to the sewer.
Okay, and what is a typical benefit charge?
I think the estimate, I don't have it in front of me. I think the estimate for this benefit charge on, we estimated it on the bill. What was the estimate? I don't know if it was, I don't want to give you a number off the top of my head, but we do have an estimate and I could put that in analysis, the estimate benefit charge that you would get. I don't have that. When we went out to talk to the residents, we gave that information out, but I just don't have that sheet of paper in front of me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, with with the requirements that people who install septic systems, that the the standards that are in place, they're very expensive. Very expensive. So we have the, I I think the one gentleman said that his system was new, functioning and and new and and they're they're expensive and of course, they need maintenance as well. So I I can understand if he's not going to be hooking up because it's not reasonable to think he would. So ha- to have him pay a sewer charge and then also maintain his own expensive expensive septic system, there's a problem there. I I I understand. So, you know, if you'd look at it from that perspective as well.
Okay.
Chairman, can I just wrap this up?
Well, Councilman Randall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to politely excuse myself. I I have an obligation that I need to run to. I think that this was a very interesting conversation and I'm looking forward to the the further analysis of it. And the next, I think the resolution that we're we're heading to next, I'll be reading all about that and I certainly know what a RISE Zone and what it could mean to to Towson University. So just wanted to excuse myself. And thank you, everyone, for the discussions today.
Thank you, Councilman Randall. Councilman Clark, if you have something?
Yeah, just something really briefly, like I I understand Councilman Catch's points. I mean, I think you raised some interesting thoughts there and, you know, maybe this is an issue.
Still meeting, so.
Maybe I'm, maybe this is an issue that we defer or revisit, depending on, depending on what analysis comes back. I mean, it feels like we, may maybe there's something else that we can do where we're able to find a solution in in a creative, however equitable equitable way. Because I mean, I can, I can definitely see both sides here, but I'm wondering if there's maybe possibly something else that we could consider here where we could accomplish almost both sides of this. And so maybe this might need a little more time. I don't know. But I'm interested in the analysis and trying to keep an open mind on this one as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Clark. Councilman Marks, you'll have the last word there.
Yeah, thank you very much, everyone. Mr. and Mrs. Meadows, Mr. Gray, thank you for being on this call. Look, I I don't I don't introduce legislation lightly. I've been going through my emails and there's been back and forth since July about this. And I had, I felt compelled to introduce this bill to hopefully stimulate a resolution to this. I also candidly am not very confident that an appeal would go in the direction of the Meadows. I mean, they they have also been trying to get to a solution here unsuccessfully. Having said that, we'll continue to talk to the administration. I very much appreciate the administration's ongoing dialogue and their support in this area. And if we can find a solution, we need to tighten the bill. So be it. We'll we'll work toward that. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. It's been a long evening. We appreciate everybody's time and attention and certainly appreciate all the callers who called in. Anything else before we adjourn?
We have the RISE, the RISE resolution, right?
Oh, we have one more resolution?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Councilman Marks, it's you again?
Is, I think it's the administration, right? Although I'm going to be sponsoring, co-sponsoring this, right? Yes. Administration.
At the bottom of your agenda, Mr. Chairman, Resolution forty-seven dash twenty-two.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, let's take that one then. Forty-seven dash twenty-two, Todd.
All right. Good evening and thank you for squeezing me in at the end. And thank you, Chairman Jones, councilmembers for the opportunity. And also thank you, Councilman Marks, for your support and cosponsorship of this proposed resolution. I'll be quick. This resolution is to express the county's support for the establishment of a regional institution, Strategic Enterprise Zone adjacent to Towson University. A little bit of background, the RISE Zone is a state program. It allows qualified educational institutions to use incentive to attract and retain businesses within close proximity of their campus. The county has actually been working and been in discussions with Towson University regarding this designation for several years now. So this resolution demonstrates the county's support as a requirement for Towson University's application to the Maryland Department of Commerce. And as for the delineated area of the zone, the proposed zone falls follows the outline of the existing commercial revitalization district to have consistent to have consistency for the Towson Business District. And the program really is meant to target the, uh, attraction retention of technology startups, particularly from the Towson University's incubator program, uh, Towson Startup. Uh, this designation essentially unlocks the ability for the county to apply for matching state grant funds to retain some of these startups. And, um, if the county so chooses down the road. Um, important to note that specifically it is for startups and, um, incubator businesses. So therefore retail restaurants and residential projects would not be eligible and, um, and also this credit cannot be stacked with any other incentives. For example, it cannot be stacked with the, um, commercial revitalization district credit, cannot be stacked with a brownfields tax credit. Um, so also joining me is Dr. Dariya Sarani, Vice President of Strategic Partnerships and Applied Research. Uh, if the council has any questions directly for Towson University.
Thank you. Are there any comments for the members?
And Mr. Chairman, I have a comment after Councilman Marks as well.
Let's go right ahead. Councilman Mark?
So this is the very last time I will be voting on legislation as Towson's councilman. And, um, this is a nice cherry on the top. Uh, you know, the past 12 years, we've seen tremendous investment in Towson. It's a real success story for Baltimore County. And the colleges, the institutions of higher learning are at the core of it. Uh, I am, uh, wholeheartedly in support of this resolution. And I want to thank Towson University for all that it does to be, um, a key anchor in our community.
Thank you, Councilman Mark. Uh, Councilman Cat?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I would, uh, like to, uh, this, this bill affects my district as well. Uh, my district is north of the Beltway. And I noticed that, uh, all the documentation, uh, states that it's in the fifth district. It's not totally in the fifth district. It's in my district as well, which is again, north of the Beltway. I would like to exempt the part of my district, north of the Beltway, out of this resolution. For many reasons, um, our community from, on York Road from the Beltway up is being threatened with many, like for instance, a light rail extension down York Road, uh, by a TOD, uh, Lutherville Station. And it's gotten to the point where the community doesn't trust government, to be honest with you. And, and, and you know, you don't need the area north of the Beltway for this. It's not adjacent to Towson University. It's not even near Towson University. So uh, I, I do want to amend the bill to take the area in my district out of it. And, uh, you know, do you, do you have any comments, uh, about that?
I, I mean, can I just comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I, I, I certainly do not. Um, I think the councilman has a very good point about the um, lack of outreach by the Maryland Department of Transportation with regard to the transit proposals. I didn't receive one briefing on that plan, not one. That's all I'll say.
Yeah, uh, it, and this, and there's a TOD situation that I was not consulted about at all. I don't know if this administration is, I, I don't know what's happening, to be honest with you. I know it's before the county government. And, uh, it is causing a lot of problems. What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to get the communities to work together. And this is not helping at all. And so, uh, is it, Mr. Dolbin, do you have any comments about, I mean, does it matter?
No, removing, I mean, that's complete your discretion. Uh, again, this is a proposed map and we just initially followed the existing commercial revitalization district, but it's definitely at your discretion if you would like to remove the area on the outside of the Beltway. Um, it won't have any impact on the resolution.
The outside.
Yes, on the outside.
Absolutely. I'd like to remove it. And that's not to say that in the future, we might want to put it back in, but, uh, just for now, it, 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 believe me, you're, you're going to be, that, that's helpful to me because as I said, I'm trying to get the community to work together with, with, uh, many other groups and it, this is, all of this is just people's trust for government is just falling to the wayside and, and, uh, they think all these things are happening behind their back. So I'll just, that's all I'll say.
Okay.
Thank you very, I appreciate it very much.
Councilman Cat, I hope you remind them that, uh, they need to trust the government because the government is all they have. And they go, they ride down the street and the light is red and green, government put that there. They're riding on the road, the government will put that there. If somebody picks up their trash, the government is putting up their trash. When the kids go to school, the government is paying for their school, riding their school. So because they have one bad experience, don't go blaming all the government and just.
Well, it's, it's unfortunately two to three bad things happening and, and you know, the, the, uh, we're, we all are concerned about anything that government does where the people are not informed early on or the elected officials not informed early on, which is, is the situation, not with this bill. I'm not talking about this, but other situations that are going on. And, um, you know, we don't want to ever be perceived as doing things behind closed doors. And, uh, I'm not this, I'm not referring to this issue. I'm just referring to other issues uh, with the light rail, with the TOD that's proposed next to, to historic Lutherville, et cetera. Um, it, it, it's a situation that I think that I could have worked out. But all this interference is really causing problems or, as I said, people don't trust. Uh, it's what's going on and it's only because things appear to be happening behind the scenes.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, Councilman Kirk, did you have something before we adjourn? No, we have two speakers.
Not, not on this issue, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, let's have the speakers, Mr. Donald.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our first registered speaker is Katie Maloney. Ms. Maloney, you are now a panelist.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I have nothing to add. We appreciate your support on this. And as Todd mentioned, this has been a long time coming. So thank you so much for your continuing support.
Thank you.
Uh, Katie, are, are same Katie that I work with in Annapolis?
Yes, all those years ago, Councilman Cat, yes, the same Katie.
Okay, nice to hear you.
Nice to see you.
Good to, so, thank you.
Donald. Next speaker.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Darius Ironi. I think that's how you pronounce his name. My apologies if I misspoke. You're on as a speak, uh, as a panelist.
Uh, thank you, uh, it's Dariya Sarani. Um, we, uh, we appreciate the support of the county. As Katie had mentioned, this is a long time coming. So we're excited to move forward with this. Um, and we certainly have made considerable investments in, in Towson with the, with four oh one and, and now the Yarmory. So we appreciate all the support the county has given us.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
Just, uh, make, uh, uh, close this out with a positive comment here, uh, to Councilman Catch and Councilman Marks and Dr. Ironi and Katie. Uh, many of us Towson graduates, uh, we view Towson not only as an anchor institution, but also many of us, we call it the Harvard of the mid-Atlantic. And so I just wanted to share that with you, Councilman Cat.
That's great. Thank you, Councilman Patoka. Wonderful.
Now, now, Councilman Patoka, I went to Western Maryland College, which is the real Harvard in the entire state. So, uh, you know.
The opposite word is they consider.
But, uh, Katie, in case you don't realize, we, uh, kid back and forth, so.
Just like the old days, right?
Uh, just like the old days. That's right. So good to hear you. I don't see you, but I hear you, so.
Okay, I know I was premature before, but I'll, I guess we'll wrap it up now. Any additional questions or comments before we adjourn?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Kirk?
Yeah, just two quick things. I know the night is late. Um, one is I second Councilman, um, Catch's, I feel like we're doing this a lot, Councilman Catch, but yeah, Western Maryland College, uh, definitely, uh, hear, hear the sentiment for sure there. Towson's, uh, decent as well.
This is as good as College Park, right, Tom?
And Western Maryland College now, some people call, some people call McDaniel College now or something like that, but I always know it as Western Maryland. But anyway, um, on, on a more sober note and, and, uh, you know, a tougher note, uh, did one of the council know and maybe we can incorporate in our silent meditation, um, come legislative, but I, I was just told that Jimmy Caronia has had passed away. Most of you know him, uh, from Dimitris. Uh, we didn't always agree on everything. Sometimes we passionately disagree, but I, I think he's just a wonderful guy. We, we became pretty decent friends over the last, uh, several years. Uh, he passed away last Thursday. And so just another kind of giant of a person. I mean, we just had Louis Diggs pass away recently now. Jimmy Caronia. So I did want to let the council know and obviously our thoughts and prayers to Tom and Lisa, Ms. Caronia's and their, their family, just a wonderful group of people. So I, I want to let the council know because I know a lot of, a lot of you knew him and, and, uh, knew he was a, a great guy. So just, just wanted to give you a heads up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Kirk. And just to follow up, I, I know we had the funeral services for Mr. Diggs today. And I presented the family with a citation on behalf of all of us. Um, you know, thanks for, uh, making us think about him and thanks for sharing the other information. Any additional questions, comments before we adjourn? Thank you to everyone and thank you to.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.
Good night.